On the whole time.
Okay, we're on. Yeah. You'll remember this.
You should have one mic on, or maybe it works.
Yeah, the mayor's mic, I think is always on.
The mayor's on here.
Yeah, but even though that mic's on.
It's gonna be on, yeah, it's gotta be on.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
We're better off.
Snap time to kill her.
Relaxing.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Yes, Mayor.
Um, being you're the closest and I can see you easiest, can you give me a thumbs up when we're ready to start?
Yeah, absolutely. We're just playing with lights to be able to see the projected screen of all the Zoom participants, that's all. So I think we're just about, I'll give you the nod.
Thank you.
Perfect. Mayor, I think we're good to go.
Okay, thank you. The City of Plymouth City Council Regular Meeting for Thursday, July 13th, is now called to order. In-person participation by the public is permitted and remote, or electronic public participation is also available by following the Zoom link listed on the agenda. Members of the public participating electronically via the link and wishing to speak may do so during public comment by using the raised hand feature in the Zoom webinar. When dialing into Zoom at the phone number listed on the agenda, on your phone, use star nine to raise and lower your hand, use star six to mute and unmute your phone. You can submit written public comment prior to the meeting by emailing your comment comments to the Acting Deputy City Clerk at D Knight at cityofplymouth.org before 3:30 PM on the day of the meeting. Emailed public comments will be distributed to the City Council and made part of the official record. This meeting is being recorded. At this time, we ask everybody to silence your cell phones or similar devices. And at this time, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Here.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter. Can you hear us, Val? You're muted.
Got it. I'm here.
Vice Mayor Sim.
Here.
Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to take a minute and introduce Joshua Nelson, an attorney from BB&amp;K, who is joining us tonight, being our city attorney Frank Splendorio is absent. So, Mr. Nelson, thank you for being with us tonight. And at this time, I'm going to ask everybody who's at City Hall to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mayor, Councilmember White, could you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, in this world, with liberty and.
Thank you. Number two, approval of the City Council Regular Meeting Agenda for tonight, July 13th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda for tonight's meeting?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Could we please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim.
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. Number three, public comment. Under provisions of the California Code, the City Council, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing a speaker's submittal form to the Deputy City Clerk or following the instructions noted on this agenda. Speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item is heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state their name and community of residence. Under provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or an urgent need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. And at this time, I'd like to acknowledge and recognize that for item three, we have received written public comment via email jointly submitted by Ms. Amy Gomes and Ms. Stephanie Moreno regarding the city's possible purchase of automated license plate readers. This public comment will be made part of the record. Do we have anybody in City Hall who would like to make public comment to the council at this time?
My name is Jim Rooney, I'm the Amador County Assessor, and we just finished turning over the assessment role for the county. And generally, we'd like to get on your agenda to give you the information pertinent to Plymouth. But we thought that's going to take three to five weeks, and we thought maybe we'll just come up public comment, tell you what we have that pertains to Plymouth, and if you have any questions, you can ask us. And I wanted to introduce Jeff Himmelman, he's the Assistant Assessor. And would it be okay if I handed out little packets of information to you? Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, and Jeff's gonna tell you about the Plymouth assessments in Plymouth.
Good evening, can you guys hear me okay? Yeah, so my name's Jeff Himmelman, I'm the Assistant Assessor, and this is just our annual outreach to let you know what's going on with the assessments. We concluded our review of all the activity for 2022, we turned the rollover for 2324. Countywide assessments were up 6.76% over last year. And Plymouth had the highest of all, all the incorporated, unincorporated, was up 16.25% from 22, 23. I think most of that's driven by Zimfandel Ridge. But that's pretty much the gist of it. It's good if you own property in Plymouth, not so much if you're trying to buy it. But overall, it's good news, I think.
Yeah, I wanted to add to that. We're keeping track now of the number of residences that are in each jurisdiction. And in one of those sheets, it shows that Plymouth, the residences right now, I'm talking primary residences, is 226, it has 336 residential properties. And in Plymouth, last year, the number of our primary residents went up about 6%. And another thing I did want to mention to you, on one of those sheets, as you all remember, probably from 2009 to 2012, the real estate market was rather a large mess. Values were going down during that time period, and when it got to the low, which was in 2012, we kept track from 2012 until now, assessments in the City of Plymouth have gone up over 160%. And that's, that's quite a bit. Ion had similar increases. Sutter Creek didn't have as big increases because Sutter Creek didn't go down as much as Ion and Plymouth did. But anyway, Jeff, you mentioned 16% for Plymouth. Yeah, the county as a whole went up only 6.76%. So Plymouth at 16% increase, that's pretty substantial. Plymouth seems to be a growing area. Jeff, and you work most, the Zimfandel area.
Yeah.
Yeah, like Jeff said, Jeff works that area. Those houses, they seem to fuel a lot of the growth in Plymouth, assessment wise, that is. So anyway, our office has an awful lot of information, and as a matter of fact, I provide some of the information to Plymouth, some of your clerical stuff. And if you ever have any questions or concerns, feel free to contact our office. We do have a lot of information that can be helpful. And also, if any of you ever have an issue with your own assessment, when you call our office, ask for Jeff. That just makes things a lot easier. But anyway, are there any questions or concerns?
I got just a real simple question.
Sure.
Um, because of course Plymouth, and you mentioned incorporated and unincorporated area.
Yeah.
And of course, Jackson has that, and Sutter Creek has that. You guys break that down in, you know, okay, this is city, this is outside the city, because I'm assuming all the unincorporated stuffs like Pioneer Pine Grove, those areas.
Yeah, yeah, and the unincorporated areas around here, that's.
Oh, okay.
Plymouth, yeah. Everything that's not in a city is in the unincorporated areas.
Okay.
The stuff we gave you for Plymouth is within the city of Plymouth.
That within the, that's.
Yeah, it's very specific. Yeah, so you know, I guess you guys could do your math and do some sort of estimate and figure what your increase and the money you get from assessments from the county would be. So I don't have those specific numbers, but we just wanted to tell you, it's up over 16%, which is a lot. You know?
I have a question, is this include commercial properties as well, or just?
Every, every.
So combined.
Taxable assessment. Yes. So it's everything. Anyway, I gave you kind of a lot of information there, a lot of numbers. It's the highest, the fastest growing area in the county assessment wise. So. And I gave you a lot of numbers, we gave you a lot of numbers. If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to contact the office.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That's nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else at City Hall who would like to make public comment at this time?
Mr. Wise is coming up.
Metamare, members of the City Council, kind of a tough act to follow the assessor's office, but I live in the community in Plymouth that is responsible for that 16% increase in the success valuation, you're welcome. I'm also fortunate to serve as the Chairman of the Veterans Park Committee. And as a reminder, and maybe an update for folks that don't know this, the Veterans Park Project is a collaborative effort between the City of Plymouth and the Rotary Club, and as such, it seems really appropriate for us to provide regular periodic updates as to what we're doing with the park and how we're getting along. And I'd like to take just a minute tonight and provide you with a quick little update of what's going on. Earlier this week, the Vice Chair of our committee, John Colburn, and I, two members of our committee, went down to Stockton to inspect the polished black granite that has been delivered and upon which will engrave the names of all of the service members from the Fifth Congressional District, whose names will be engraved on that black granite. I just would tell you that the stone looks beautiful. It's going to be, I think, a fitting tribute to the service that these men and women from the armed services have provided. So we're really excited to, to begin to do that engraving. Also, wanted to do a little bit of a shout out as well. As you can imagine, to try to capture the names of men and women who are eligible to be included on the memorial, there are two criteria. They have to be from, at some point, the Fifth Superior District of Amador County, and they have had to have served in one of the service branches. To validate those two conditions, obviously, is an awful lot of research. And to do that through military service records, ancestry.com, it's a real painstaking job to do that research. We had calculated that of the 800 and some names that we've been provided thus far, had we contracted out for that, as was suggested, it would run us about $75,000 to do that research, and we didn't have enough volunteers to do the research ourselves. We're really fortunate in that we had reached out to the Church of the Latter Day Saints, one of the best research entities that is out there, and I'm thrilled to say that John and I were down there yesterday, and we picked up an additional 500 names that they had thoroughly researched for us, was just impeccable, high caliber research. That gives us about 700 names that have now been completely and thoroughly researched, and we're just now in the process of trying to fill in the blanks for some of those and checking for duplicates with others. Some of this is really difficult because some of these names go back to the Civil War. So it's a, just an unbelievable job that the representatives of the church did for us, and they did it for free and with great enthusiasm and joy. And finally, I just want to say that the Monument Company out of Stockton will be coming up into the park Wednesday, July 26th, the date of clock in the morning, and we're going to do the final layout for how the stones and the memorials in the park will be laid out. As this is a community project, I would encourage anybody from the community that would like to come out, be part of that process, and see how we're gonna lay the memorial out to come out and join us that morning. So I appreciate the update, and I'm grateful for the continued support for the city for our project.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. Is there anybody else in City Hall? Mr. Colburn.
Mary Ann, like the looks of your house. Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Jim had said here. We were laboring with trying to find out how we were getting all these things to get them certified, and we weren't, what happened, even with the government and even the congressman couldn't get access. For us, so we did, came upon the brainstorm of doing with the Latter Day Saints. They've been unbelievable. It's probably taken an hour or more for each one of these names. That's 800 hours. And they've had at times eight or 10 people working on these things. The amazing thing is, is how wonderful they were in receiving and doing this for us. They said they got to know some of these people because they had to read several hours on them and going through their history. It felt like they were friends with them. We did, were able to, was nice enough to give us some little pins, and we gave them twelve pins for those people that were working on it. But I'd like to see a letter from the city to their temple for a future and possibly movement for the name of Homeward of our Park Ventures. So it was an outstanding thing that they did for us, unbelievable, and they were thrilled to do it. And it was because it was for the veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Is there anybody else in City Hall who would like to make public comment at this time?
Hi, I'm Michael Spinetta from Hawksview. I want to remind our public servants that their words belittling city coworkers online are likely protected as free speech, but when opinions are overgeneralized and hyperbolic, they make the city look once again like someone creating a belacistic work environment. This example, picked from many, regarding the swimming pool shade sales from early July by Commissioner Moreno. Quote, "They've known since at least Thursday. I am beyond disappointed that protecting their residents to rely on public facilities in this heat isn't a priority for them," end quote. Of course, we have that, or in this example where the personal timeline of Councilman Kleinfeldter was used this week on the political timeline of the mayor, a timeline not allowed in Commissioner Moreno's private political group. Here, I speak about the councilman's recent future agendizing of an idea to correlate the garbage and water bills together, receiving a belligerent reply. Quote me, "Great way to help folks' water bill," when referring to a post that Mary Ann made on her political timeline, helping people out. "Heck of a lot better than another idea we've seen locally that would have affected people's access to water if they didn't pay their bills," end quote of me. Response from the councilman, "Mike Spinetta, I failed to see how something that was never a proposal can fail. Gaslighting and revising history have become your fallback. Who is revising history?" I say myself, "The idea was proposed as a future agenda item." And her timeline was just used politically regarding something that was before the council. And, you know, in the future agenda item, on record. Also, "An elected official who blocks views is guilty of government censorship." Councilman Kleinfeldter and Commissioner Moreno both reported and thus got removed a simple post of mine in yet another private group, giving a descending view of the commissioner's private political group. Cases recently lost by other elected officials show they cannot block constituents from political discussion, and our state's AB 992 modifies those rules to apply to a commission or committee created by a city council as Los Angeles Council, their lawyer of the city, has interpreted on record for their standards and practices. Again, this begs for a better ethics guidance system because an elected official using her personal timeline, emphasizing personal timeline politically, to remove a simple descending opinion of a constituent can certainly be interpreted as government censorship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spinetta. Is there anybody else in City Hall who would like to make public comment at this time? Nobody else?
Nope, nobody else is standing.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Knight. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to make public comment?
Ms. Gomes has her hand up.
Okay, Ms. Gomes, we have already received public comment from you, written public comment.
Okay, it does, can I ask the attorney there, does that preclude me if I provide a written public comment from being able to speak during the public comment period?
So, Ms. Gomes, I'm gonna go ahead and do my best to answer that, and the city attorney can certainly help me out if needed, but being I'm the chair of the meeting, I'm going to state that it's my understanding that a public comment is allowed either live, in person, or via Zoom, or via written, written comment. And like I said, we have received your written comment, public comment. I believe that to allow you two opportunities for public comment would be outside of the norm and would be not fair, would not be fair to those people who are limited to one public comment per item.
So they can only speak of one topic during their public comment?
No, it's my, it's my understanding that they can only speak at one, for one time. For under three minutes.
Okay, I don't believe that is true, but I will, you know, I will concede with that, and I'm glad it's on the record if it isn't, but thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Do we have, I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom. Ms. Moreno. Ms. Moreno, again, I'm gonna say that we have received your written public comment that was jointly submitted by you and Ms. Gomes. And it was regarding the city's possible purchase of automated license plate readers, and your public comments have been made part of the record, your written public comments have been made part of the record.
Mayor Ackerman.
Yes.
I adapt to your characterization that the members of the public can only comment once on public matters. I think the City Council has a policy where they don't allow people to speak and then get up again and speak later on, under public matters. But I asked the city to respond to me as to what government code allows you to say that you may only submit written comments, or you may only appear at the podium. You may only choose one of those, because I consider that the city is preventing me from exercising my right under the Brown Act to submit comments. You don't even know what it is I want to talk about, and you're telling me that I cannot talk. And so I would like the attorney to comment on the government code, to give me the government code citation that says the city can require that a member of the public who has submitted public comments in writing, such as Mr. Ackerman did at a previous meeting, may not speak at the podium later on.
Okay, Ms. Moreno, at this time, I don't think anybody on the council is prepared to give you that government code, and again, as the chair of this meeting, for this time and under the circumstances, I will allow you to make public comments, but I do request that you keep your comments as long as your comments are not duplicative to the public comments that we've already received from you. And then I'll go back and extend the same opportunity to Ms. Gomes under the circumstances. So I'm willing to make an exception. So please, Ms. Moreno, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to, I'd like to, first of all, my first public comment is I don't know if Jim Rooney is still in the room. But I wanted to compliment him and his staff on the excellent customer service they provide to people that call in. I've had numerous dealings with him this year and last. And they always go above and beyond, provide customer service, treat people with respect. And in particular, Jim and Jeff, I've talked to, I don't know if they're there, but I'm hoping that they will get these comments. Secondly, I am hoping that I will get the code that I've asked for since the city has refused to answer my question in email. I believe that the city of Plymouth is using extraordinary means to silence detractors. You heard a previous speaker talk about censorship on social media, which was unbased in fact, but the fact is the city council is preventing people from expressing comments and when they do, they're trying to silence them or to diminish them. For example, we received an email, I received an email today from Dana regarding the public comments that were submitted in writing and the city attached its own comments to our public comments to offset what we were saying in our public comments. That's unprecedented for a city to do that, to immediately attach their own comments onto the public comments submitted by a member of the public in order to suppress them or diminish them. So I am asking the city once again to take stock, to have the city attorney review the policies that it has regarding public comment. I quite honestly don't understand why they're so afraid of hearing from the public. You were elected to listen to the public, you're lessed to take feedback from us and you, at every opportunity, attempt to suppress myself and Ms. Gomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno. And Ms. Gomes?
Okay, thank you.
Please.
Okay, I had a shorter one, but under the situation, I'm gonna go for it now. All right, on page two of the June 22nd, 2023 minutes, under the public comment section, it states that City Manager Roberts let me know that supplemental information was provided with the corrected information in the minutes regarding the survey data. And I'm requesting a copy of those supplemental minutes as I've been able to find that information online. So if the public, the information in the packet is not corrected and not provided to the public, then the public hearing is not really giving the information out. Corrected minutes were not provided in the June 22nd, 2023 packet or in this packet. Additionally, the website filing system that's available to the public is not being uploaded with all packets, agendas and notices. And if it's appropriate, and I think it is, I would like the council to direct the city to make this a priority because it would, it would remove the burden of the public records requests that we're having to submit. Without the information being uploaded to the electronic filing system, the public can't access the information needed. Additionally, I noticed in the budget that includes a thousand dollar cost to perform public records requests. And I understand what that was for, but this item appears as a cost of a thousand dollars to the people. But this cost is not going to the clerk. It doesn't increase their salary. And therefore, it basically only shows that the time spent trying to figure out how many public records requests are being submitted. And so to reiterate, if the public documents and the business of the people was made available online and I work for the state and we do that, it reduces the burden of the city staff having to get documents made available for people that are just trying to figure out what's going on down there. So I have another thing to say. On June 5th, a notice went out listing APNs with liens for failure to pay water and sewer bills. And I was, I didn't know about it, but I found it in the filing system, which was great. That one was there. I've not seen this item come to the city council. And so my question to the city manager and the council is, did these liens get recorded and what happened with the notice? And are they being, are the liens being abandoned or are you gonna bring it back to the council? And then I wanted to thank Mike Spinetta for reminding me to ask about the sun sails at the pool. They've been up every year. I go to the pool with my five-year-old every, almost three times a week and everyone's kind of crammed under there. So I don't know if it's possible to get sun sails up or if they would allow me to donate trees. I grow native plants and I would like to donate five trees if you guys want them. I probably don't want, you probably want the leaves, but I'd like some kind of shade there for people. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomes.
Mayor Ackerman, can I address Ms. Gomes' comments, please?
Yes, please. Ms. Roberts?
The supplemental minutes are at the very end of the packet on the June 22nd agenda packet. The June 5th notice that she's talking about for the liens, that item was pulled because one of the pieces of information was missing. They will be coming back to the council on August 10th with a new public notice being done and new notices going out to whoever falls into that criteria at the time that the initial public notices is done. And in terms of the shade at the pool, the city has two shades out and that's the shades the city has always put out. We don't have intentions of purchasing anymore at this time. And no, we do not want any more trees planted at the pool. It causes a difficult time for our public works to maintain the lawn surface that the kids at the pool put their towels out and lay out when they're not in the pool. We've had that discussion already with our public works department. We've been monitoring the number of kids that have been at the pool and there's adequate shade for the number of kids to fit underneath the two shades that we have.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell me again where it was in that packet, the supplemental minutes? I didn't hear that date.
It's at the very end of the packet. It says supplemental information and then it has the minutes. And then it goes into supplemental information on the Putnam Ranch.
Okay, what, what date packet?
The June 22nd packet.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I can briefly respond to the questions about the scope of public comment if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Yeah, so both the Brown Act and federal case law are very clear that the city can adopt reasonable rules and regulations on public comment on all manner of things, including the time limits and avoiding duplicative comments. But I'm happy to certainly take the discussion that we received this evening back to the city attorney and we can follow up as appropriate. But believe the city's policy as relayed by the mayor is legal and appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Is there anybody else on Zoom who would like to make public comment?
This is Valerie. I just want to make note, especially with the attorney just saying the city can make any policies. Well, the city hasn't made this policy. At the previous meeting, Mr. Spinetta spoke for his three minutes on public comment, mostly with, mostly disparaging me with terror assassination and was also.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, point of order.
What's your, what's your point, councilmember?
This is not an item and and we're speaking on business from, basically from the dais.
My point was he was allowed to provide during that meeting a packet of 15 pages of garbage. And he was able to take his three minutes of speech. So if we have a policy, I'd like to know where this, when the city adopted the policy.
Okay, Councilmember Kleinfeldter, regarding your comments about a member of the public providing garbage, I am just going to say that courtesy is appreciated at all times during our meetings and
That also nice.
And so thank you for your public comment. It's noted. And is there any other public comment?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to just make a quick comment. Just, I guess, turning things positive a little bit, I just want to do a shout out to our community on the amazing, amazing Fourth of July that we had. Our day started off with an amazing parade led by John Colburn for many, many years now, just another exceptional presentation. You know, while it was an amazing parade, our hearts were absolutely with Jamie Lovenco, who was unable to be here, but I know she was absolutely with us in spirit. I want to give a shout out to Jeff and Curtis, City Public Works folks who basically work a split shift, were out there in the morning making sure the roads were properly marked and shut off so the parade went off without a hitch, then came back in the evening and made sure everything was buttoned up and done and cleaned up before they went home that night after our fireworks. Lastly, throwing out to our public safety partners with Amador County Fire and Amador County Sheriff's Department. I did not see one illegal firework used anywhere, at least within the Main Street area. I didn't see anything outside either. And that's just a testament, just an amazing job of patrolling, just a great day, just a true testament to the amazing community we have. And so yeah, Godspeed to all and look forward to seeing you next year.
He's Kleinfeldter.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? And if you're from the, if you're part of the public and you're zooming in, please, I'm gonna ask you to put yourself on mute because we are hearing some comments from, from your homes. So if you could put yourself on mute unless you're speaking, it would be appreciated. Okay, I'm gonna close this now to public comment. And number four, presentations, proclamations, appointments, we have none at this time. Number five, consent calendar items. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless, before the city council votes on the motion to adopt. Members of the council, staff or the public request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. On the consent calendar, we have item 5.1 correspondence. And we did receive a summer newsletter from Amador Water Agency. So I hope everybody can access a copy of that. And I see that they also say that they have a, they're gonna have an AWA booth on the midway at the Amador County Fair. So that's what we've received as far as correspondence. We also have item 5.2 to approve the special meeting minutes of June 13th, 2023. Item 5.3 is to approve the special meeting minutes of June 22nd, 2023. Item 5.4 is to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 22nd, 2023. Item 5.5 is to approve resolution 2023-35, making findings necessary to continue conduct, to continue to conduct Brown Act meetings virtually. And item 5.6, approve a rental agreement with the 26th Agricultural Association Amara County Fair in the amount of $650 per month for the corporation yard. And item 5.7, to authorize payment of six budgeted invoices over city manager's authority in the combined amount of approximately $124,926. Is there, is there any public comment on the consent calendar items? Is there anybody in City Hall who'd like to make public comment?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom? Ms. Moreno, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. It was hard keeping my hand up. It got lowered three times while I was waiting. So I don't know if you have a glitch in your system or something, someone finds that amusing, but I have complained about this before. Only seems to happen to me. I would like to have, there's corrections that I would like to propose to the minutes of June 22nd, 2023. And I would like to inquire regarding this six budgeted voices over the city manager's authority. I'd like to inquire as to what the purpose of the Nova Coast bill is because it doesn't indicate in the packet what that $18,000 cost is for. It says it was ordered by Michael Colton. So it's unclear as whether this is a old invoice that wasn't paid or if it's an ongoing invoice. And so I'm hoping for clarification. Thank you.
It only happens to her.
Mary Ann? Yes? Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
If it, if it speeds things up, I'm gonna pull 5.7 anyway, so it'll be agendized as an item for discussion. And then the 5.4, there was a correction to the minutes regarding the budget. And it says it was adopted. And I'm pretty clear that the motion was as amended, adopted, because we made amendments during that meeting.
Okay, so if you'd like to pull 5.7 for the, and in the entire 5.7, right?
Well, you can't break it up, yes.
Yeah, okay. So how about we move 5.7 to 7.2? After the Aqua contract? So that's where I'd like to put that.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay, Ms. Roberts, well, we're gonna, we're gonna move 5.7 and make that an agenda item. So to Ms. Moreno's comments, we can address that when we get to, where we can take that into consideration when we get to that as the agenda item.
Excuse me, Mrs. Mayor, I had a correction to the minutes as well. Did you pull the minutes off?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't.
I'm sorry, I should have called you Madam Mayor. It was a slip of my tongue. I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Was it item, item 5.3?
Yes, it was the June 22nd regular meeting minutes.
Okay, 5.4.
Page five under public comment.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Page five under public comment. I requested that the council adopt a letter opposing, unless amended, the bill, unless amended to exempt recreational parks. And this is written as if I wanted the bill to not exempt recreational parks. So I'd like the sentence written in a way that makes it clear, I was requesting that the bill be amended to exempt recreational parks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Knight and Ms. Roberts, did you note those changes that are requested by Ms. Moreno?
We have that. We'll listen to the tape and make any changes as the audio states.
Okay, thank you. So as far as the consent calendar items, do we have a motion to accept the consent calendar items with the noted review of item 5.4? The regular meeting minutes of June 22nd, considering Ms. Moreno's comments. And then also knowing that we're pulling 5.7 and agendaizing that. So otherwise, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as discussed?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the corrections on 5.4 after listening to the tape and pulling 5.7 and you said making it 5.2, correct?
Correct, 7.2.
Okay, I think that motion should work.
Okay. Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
And, uh, thank you. Just kind of a technical note here for Ms. Moreno. I see that your hand is still up. Ow. Okay, thank you. And so that way we know if we see your hand again, it's for a new item. Thank you. Item 6, public hearings, uh, there are none. 7, regular agenda items. Item 7.1 to discuss the Aqua contract, um, and swim lesson services not being provided. And may we please have a staff report?
Madam Mayor, City Council. The Aqua con- contract was brought to the council on May 25th for approval for this swim season. And included in the contract, on the front page of the contract, swim lessons were mentioned three times. And then on the back page in Exhibit A, it mentions that no specific certificate is required to teach swim lessons. Um, after reviewing with the city attorney, we determined that, that was considered a breach of contract. I reached out to Justin Howard with Accra and did not receive a response until after the um, staff report was written and the packet went out. I did receive, um, a response after the mayor reached out to Mr. Howard. And then today I received further communication that was obviously not included in the packet. And he has suggested that we open the pool free of charge for one week, which is equal to $2,000 back to the city, um, in lieu of providing swim lessons. Um, he is here, um, to answer any questions that the council may have. Um, he has responded that Jackson has the only lifeguards certified to teach swim lessons, even though in our agreement, it, it did say that we would have swim lessons. So I'm here to answer questions, as is Mr. Howard.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Howard, could we ask you to, um, provide us with information and your input on this? Will consider this part of the staff report?
Um, sure, thank you, Mayor Ackerman, Justin Howard, Director for Amara County Recreation Agency. So, um, uh, it is agreeable that the, uh, contract that was executed does mention, uh, swim lessons being provided. Um, unfortunately, just the seasonal nature of the position and sort of counting on what lifeguards are returning with certain certifications, uh, the city of Jackson, uh, deciding to self-manage their pool. Uh, we had, uh, one lifeguard that had the certification to, um, instruct lessons. Um, it's about, uh, I think it's about 13 hours of additional training. Uh, it's not offered anywhere near the county. It's Sacramento or the Bay Area. So that individual, uh, is employed by the city of Jackson. So um, unfortunately, uh, that is correct. We're not able to, uh, offer swim lessons for the city of Plymouth. So um, in looking at the staff report, um, you know, discussing this with, with my county attorney as well, um, as well as my, uh, board chair, you know, the idea of reducing the contract to me doesn't necessarily, um, fix anything because all that happens if the contract is reduced is we would then, uh, you know, have to cut back staffing hours since it is essentially a reimbursement minus labor. So, uh, the idea I wanted to propose to, uh, city manager, um, was basically, um, we would provide, uh, for, you know, a five-day week that we offer. Uh, we would go ahead and offer, uh, free access to the pool, uh, for community members in Plymouth. I know we talked about it the last meeting, um, how some, some members of the community, uh, especially youth can't afford the daily pass. So it'd be a good opportunity uh, to sort of showcase that, you know, come out and swim, uh, for these five days, uh, for free. Um, and essentially, uh, we can move forward with the contract. And of course, uh, in coming years, we'll make sure there's a stipulation in there, uh, that the swim lessons would be essentially, uh, as available per staffing. And I'm also happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to, um, open this now for council discussion. And councilmember White? Do you have any comments, questions?
The only.
Item 7.1?
The only question I have right now, um, and I don't know, we probably, the poll hasn't been open long enough to even know the numbers or anything is, uh, what is the busiest timeframe? Or is it Saturdays, Sundays? Is it Fridays? What, when, when are the busiest days there?
Uh, attendance wise, it's definitely Friday, Saturday.
Friday, Saturday.
It's the busier days for sure.
Okay. That's all for right now.
Thank you. Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you for being here tonight. Um, uh, yeah, obviously, some lessons are important. Make sure that our tots, as they become children, um, are safe in the pool. And, uh, you know, I would like to see that something, obviously, the ability to staff it is a critically important piece. Um, I just asked in the future, is, as soon as you recognize you don't have it, please let us know, right? Just so we can, we, we don't find ourselves in this, uh, conundrum, shall we say. So, but thank you for being here.
Yeah, absolutely. And we are working on some, uh, uh, we, we did get approved for a grant through, uh, uh, Amador Public Health, actually, that will go into effect, uh, for this upcoming swim season where we can actually subsidize and bring out an instructor to the, to the county for, um, certifications, advanced certifications. So, uh, I'm confident it will not be an issue again.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Um, I've kind of been harping on this swim lessons issue for years. Part of the reason for that is if you don't have the lessons and then going on to advanced lessons, then you don't get the qualified lifeguards that come out of that system. So it's a vicious cycle. If we're not offering these things to children, then we, we have a vacuum at the end of that. Um, and that's where we find ourselves because it's been a few years without lessons. Um, I'm not a giant fan on the solution of the solution of, here's a week free. Uh, I would prefer some remedy to the ca- to the, um, contractual agreement. But it's, that is entirely up to the council. Um, I just want our kids to be able to be safe and enjoy public property.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sim?
How many lifeguards we had, do we have, uh, at the pools currently?
Uh, two guards and one, one pool manager. So two certified guards, yeah.
And it has been a problem in the past, getting, uh, lifeguards certified for swim lessons?
Um, it has been a problem in the past. Uh, it's, it's sort of a recurring problem at the macro level. Uh, talking to other community service districts, um, in rural areas, it's difficult to get this next certification because if we go forward with these swim lessons with this certain level of lifeguard, it's actually puts us in an issue with our insurance. So it's sort of like, uh, a bigger problem. Uh, but it's certainly something that we're, that we're working to address. Um, the, the instructor, uh, at the Jackson pool that is actually certified to teach lessons, just got a certification to certify lifeguards to instruct. That's a mouthful, but it's a good asset to have in the county, uh, in terms of moving lifeguards to that next level. But it's certainly an issue on the macro level and it's something that we're, we're trying to address.
Uh, I do understand that, that from the Ri- the Red Cross, that there is a national, uh, issue with, uh, recruiting lifeguards.
There is, yes.
And, and I, I, I get the problem. So at this point in time, we, we can't, we can't fix the problem. Hopefully next year we can
Definitely.
Maybe attack it from a different direction.
Yeah, and reach, reach out to neighboring, uh, community service districts, uh, parks districts. They're just having the same issues that we are. Uh, you know, swim lessons, even in the city of Jackson are completely full. Uh, so it's, it's definitely an issue that, uh, that we as a county are, are working to, to solve.
What, uh, what, what about the other pools you, you, uh, you oversee? Uh, Jackson, uh, runs their own pool, correct?
Yeah, Jackson last year was.
What about Ione and, uh, does Ione have?
Ione and, um, Ione and, uh, Sutter Creek are also under our management contracts. So the pool pass gets you into those three pools. But there is no, there are no swim lessons, uh, offered by Accra this year, just because of that one, uh, certification.
Same problem.
Yeah. So essentially what we do if somebody calls for a swim lesson is we just go ahead and refer them to the city of Jackson.
So I only didn't question the, the contract when.
This has been, uh, uh, this has only become, uh, an issue, uh, with the city of Plymouth that's, uh, which is an understandable concern in the contract, but, uh, that's where we are right now.
Got it. Um, that's all I have.
Yeah. And I just wanted to, uh, just to sort of, uh, touch on, uh, councilmember Kleinfeldter's comment. Uh, the reason why I, why I was offering, uh, the, essentially the, the pool, access to the pool with no costs is because it doesn't affect the amount of time that we're able to open the pool by renegotiating the, the contract and cutting the amount. Uh, it's essentially just cutting the amount of hours that we have out there. That's why I thought it was a, uh, a nice compromise. Uh, thanks.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Sim. Um, uh, Mr. Howard, thank you for being here tonight. And, uh, but just, uh, so I can, I can clarify. Um, so you're proposing that, uh, people be allowed to use the pool for one week, uh, without being charged. Are, are you able to put a, a estimated dollar amount on how much money comes in on average, on a weekly basis? For people paying to use the pool?
I mean, off the, you know, off of the numbers from, from June, it's, you know, with the exception of pool passes being purchased, it's, it's never more than a hundred dollars a day for the most part. Uh, Plymouth probably closer, you know, 40 to 75 dollars. Uh, so the way that I came on that value was just the staffing that would be required, you know, one, one pool manager and two lifeguards, uh, because we would obviously expect a, a large turnout if the pool was, uh, for, for free.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, um, I have to admit, I'm, I'm, um, uh, agree with councilmember Kleinfeldter's comment that I'm not real crazy about, um, the proposal here. And again, it is up to the rest of the, it, it's up to the entire council. But what I would like to see is that, um, Accra and our city manager maybe enter into, you know, have some, have some conversations uh, about how to resolve this. Um, so, so those are my comments for now. And I would like to add, uh, open this to public comment now. Is there anybody in City Hall who would like to comment publicly on this?
Sure, Michael Spinetta Hawksview. I was just going to say online, um, I saw a quote, uh, from council, uh, saying, uh, thank you for sharing this information. I can't fix it today, but I can damn sure try to hold people accountable. I will be asking for free swim days for the interruptions we've already experienced. It just seems that, that since that was a related issue, uh, to Accra and swimming, that, uh, council did ask online for free swim days for another issue. So maybe it wasn't a contractual thing, but it, it is interesting that council did ask for free swim days for another reason. So just putting that out there, seems reasonable.
Thank you. Anybody else at City Hall who'd like to make public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, we haven't received any correspondence on this issue. And on Zoom, Ms. Gomes, I see you have your hand raised. Would you like to make public comments on this?
Yes, I would. Um, I just wanted to say that I guess this is the only time, this, um, this year was the only time I bought a pool pass. So I do, um, I know it's hard to come up with a, um, some kind of solution for this problem, but it, that doesn't really help people that bought a pass. But any free days is what I'm saying, and that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Gomes, I have a quick question.
Sure.
With it, when you, because I've never bought a pass.
Yeah.
When you buy, by, be- being you have young children, when you buy a pass, um, do, i- is it your understanding that swim lessons are offered or included?
Yes, um, last year they did actually provide swim lessons. I thought I had just heard that they didn't, but, um, that was what I was looking forward to. And, um, they've been closed, I don't know, maybe about four of the times I've tried to go from, from different little problems. Um, yesterday, I tried to go in at noon and they, no one was there at 11. And so the people that were trying to swim, there was two adults that wanted to do lap swim. And the, they were told by their supervisor to push back the 12 o'clock kids and everyone that was there and have them come at one and let these two people swim there because they, and I, I just left. So it's kind of, it's just being managed worse than I've ever seen it. But I, but also the lifeguards are the best kids I've ever dealt with. So I don't want it to be where we don't do it. I think there's just problems right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Howard, do you want to respond?
Well, I just wanted to, to chime in just, uh, uh, on account of just looking at, looking after my staff, uh, uh, this incident that was noted to me, uh, by a few different staff members and one of my supervisors is that there was uh, some profanity, foul language directed, um, at some of my staff members over this, um, potential resolution of pushing back, uh, lap swim, in fact, by Ms. Gomes. So I did in fact have some staff that asked to go home early that day because they were a little bit overwhelmed by the reaction. So I just wanted to take this uh, opportunity in front of the public, just, let's use our best manners at the pool. These kids are doing the best they can. Um, if there's a bigger issue, just feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom who would like to make public comment at this time?
I would.
Yes, uh, looks like Mr. Campbell?
Yep.
Yes, please go ahead.
Kirkwood, property owner in Plymouth. Learned to swim at the Plymouth Pool when we had a little town of 800 people. Had swimming lessons every year. Pool never closed. And, uh, Mr. Howard's, uh, comments didn't have any accountability in them. He said, per staffing availability next year. He didn't say, I will make sure this happens. And I, I don't find that to be an accountable answer. I think that we need, as a city, to make sure that this happens. But that there is that, those, the, the, the people in Plymouth paid and saved that pool and donated a lot of money. And now not to have it open and not have it available for the children, which is something I had available to me in the eighties and nineties. And I used every day of my life. I- i- is something that's atrocious to me. So we have to have some accountability to Mr. Howard. He has to come up and say, yes, we will have swim lessons and there will be certified people. He just said, per staffing availability. He did, he didn't have an answer that was honest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Is there anybody else on Zoom who would like to make public comment? I don't see any hands up. So I'm going to go ahead and close this to public comment. And is there any other, uh, I'll go check with the council one more time to see if there's any other questions or discussion from the council. Um, councilmember White?
Yeah, um, my first initial question to Mr. Howard was, um, kind of a, I don't want to say a loaded question. The only reason I was asking what days is because I wanted to make sure that we didn't go Monday through Friday or whatever. I wanted to make sure that we got a weekend. If that was the decision of the council, I really don't like the idea either. Um, but I also want that pool open for these kids. As, uh, Mr. Campbell said, I grew up swimming in that pool myself. So, uh, I, uh, I know the importance of it for our community. So that's the biggest part that I'm looking at is what is the end goal? Will we need that pool open?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McLaughlin?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, uh, councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Um, I appreciate everyone's comments. I still believe that there should be a conversation like you suggested, Ms. Mayor, um, between the city manager and the vendor to see if they can come up with a remedy or choices of remedy and come back at the next. to see if they can come up with a remedy or choices of remedy and come back at the next meeting. Because I'm just not sure that this is acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Uh Vice Mayor Sim, any additional comments, questions?
Yes, um I I agree with most all the comments that have been made up here, but you know, we're almost halfway through to the summer now. And uh I think I would be uh okay with giving it with a with a one week free as long as it covers a weekend as well. I think uh uh Councilman White is correct. If it's Monday through Friday, we're we're gonna miss a lot of kids. I think that it it needs to go over a weekend as well. And uh so that we can get the maximum, maximum amount of kids we can in in that pool. Uh get 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 beyond this. We could, we could discuss this forever and ever. Let's make it happen. Uh I that's my my idea. Go back and re- renegotiate and and go through contracts. It it's gonna be, it's gonna be August before you know it. So let's get it, let's get it done. Anyway, that's my thought.
Okay, thank you. And um my thought is uh Councilmember or Vice, excuse me, Vice Mayor Sim, I think your your point is well taken. However, um if uh if our city manager and or city staff were to have discussions with uh Mr. Howard about this, the uh the the pool stays open and and the kids and adults still have access to the pool. So it's not like we're shutting down or anything. Um so I just want to share my thoughts on that. So at this point, I'll ask the council for either direction on this, direction to city staff. Or uh if somebody would like to make a motion. So what are the wishes of the council?
Um do we need a motion if we have pretty much consensus that Mr. Howard and uh city manager need to speak and come back? Because I kind of think that's the consensus of where we're at.
So I, so maybe I should have rephrased how I how I put it. Um I think if if that is the consensus of the cap, the council, then then that's it that we, as the council, we give that direction. Um or if somebody would make, like to make a motion in lieu of of um having the city manager and Mr. Howard have a discussion.
Yeah, I I think, I mean, in a perfect world, I'd say send it back to staff, but you know, my, but but our next meeting is August tenth. Right? So I mean, summer's over. We talked in the very beginning of finding a way for kids to swim free. This is a this isn't an ideal situation. We don't want to find ourselves in a situation. We can allow kids to swim free for a week. Um you know, we pick, you know, maybe Mr. Howard and Ms. Roberts work together to figure out which week that is. And I I agree that it needs to be incorporate a weekend. And so I'll I'll make a motion um that uh we do one week of free swim. Um that would include a weekend and uh ask uh Ms. Roberts and Mr. Howard to work together in scheduling and that just advises to which that week will be. And let's make sure we announce and let's get all the kids out there that otherwise can't normally afford to swim.
I second it.
Okay, a motion has been uh made and seconded. And uh could we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember White?
I'm gonna go ahead and say aye, um especially after listening to Mr. McLaughlin. Um we are almost done with summer. Um but yeah, next year, we gotta have uh a lot sharper eyes.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
I'm gonna say no, and it's not anything to do with Agra or the the pool being open. It has to do with procedure and we should, this is something we probably should have caught. So I'm gonna say no at this time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
And I'm also gonna vote no on this.
Thank you. Motion passes, three yeses, two noes.
Okay, thank you. Now, seven point two is uh we took item five point seven from the consent calendar, moved it to the regular agenda. So authorized payment of six budgeted invoices over city manager's authority in the combined amount of approximately one hundred twenty-four, nine hundred, one hundred tw- one hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars is now item seven point two. And can we please have a staff report?
So the invoices that I have brought to the council, two of which are from for risk manag- three are risk management, liability insurance, termination benefit insurance, workers' comp insurance. One is for Agra membership, one is for GoGov, which is the software that citizens can put in anything that goes to staff to take care of. Nova Coast is for our IT maintenance. And that is our annual contract. They just did not change the contact email in the statement of work. And that those are the contracts that I am being asked to be paid.
Okay, thank you. Um so have a a a council discussion on this. Uh Councilmember White?
He stepped away.
Okay, uh please let me know when he comes back. Um Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yeah, I don't have any comments.
Uh Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Well, I pulled this because there wasn't a good uh explanation of what the invoicing for Nova Coast was. And it's a pretty good chunk of money. So you know, I think we're all entitled to know where eighteen thousand dollars is going um clearly. And then I had a question regarding the GoGov. And it was, have, do we have any data on how often that's being used for this amount of money? If it's not being used, that so we, you know, I'm gonna go along with contracts, but we need to we need to make sure that we're using these contracts or lose these contracts.
Ms. Roberts, are are you able to speak to that a little bit? Uh are you able to speak to that now about the 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 value of the GoGov from the perspective of city staff?
I know we get GoGov emails every day from citizens sending in requests for records. Uh requests for work that they want to see done. They send in information on potholes that they see, abandoned vehicles that they see. Um I don't have numbers. I can get numbers, but I know it is used frequently.
And uh well, go ahead. I don't, I don't want to interrupt you. Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Oh, no, that, I mean, I would appreciate seeing the numbers and we can get that at a later date. I'm not going to um not vote on this because I don't have the numbers. I just, I'm I'm a little bit curious about how it comes up to several a day. Um so, but if it is, that's wonderful. I just would like to know what, how much it's being used for the money.
I will get those numbers out to the council.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Councilmember Kleinfeldter. Vice Mayor Sim?
I think, I think the GoGov is is a uh is a is a is a good tool. I know the cities use it as well. Um I I I I think uh Margaret, this is the first year GoGov has been effect here. Always been, years past. Okay. Um and the the other item of the eighteen thousand dollar item uh uh is this, this is a a bill that we've this, it's, you're paying it going forward or is it, is this in the rears? I mean, is this?
This is for the upcoming year.
Upcoming year, okay. And you said it's uh same as last year?
There is, there is an increase because we've added a server.
Okay.
Um because we're using a lot more data than we used to use. And so there's a slight increase of, I think, twenty-five hundred dollars over last year. But it is, it it was included in the budget.
Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you. And then uh my only comment or or question would be it back to the GoGov. Um it 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 seems to me that if it's helpful for the citizens to use, um I think that one of the benefits of it, and I know I have, I've used or I either used it or my husband used it. I don't remember. But anyway, it 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 gives you an acknowledgement that your request or concern or whatever has been received. And so then you can kind of see what's going along, but or what's what's happening. And I find that to be helpful. Um and I'm wondering if our staff is finding it helpful as far as documenting and keeping track of these requests and that sort of thing. Um so tho- those would be kind of my questions. Um that's, that's all I have on this for right now. So I'd like to open this to public comment. Is there anybody in um, you know, and I'm, I'm sorry, uh Councilmember White, I think you had stepped out.
I'm good for the, right now.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to open this for public comment. Is there anybody in City Hall who would like to comment on this, uh make public comment on this agenda item?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. And now I'll ask if there's anybody on Zoom. Ms. Moreno, I see your hand is up.
Yes.
Would you like to go ahead and make?
I have a question, but first I want to apologize. Um Amy Gomes pointed out to me I may be technologically challenged and be putting the wrong hand up. Um so I am sorry if I did that. I I was so upset at the beginning of this this meeting that it's entirely possible I did that. So um I have a question because I thought I was told that there um on a previous um warrant register. Um it seemed like there was a monthly charge for a firm that was doing the web um master work. And so I want to know if this IT work is in addition to another contract for webmaster work because I thought that was fifteen hundred a month. Um but maybe it's the same one. But if you have two two um large contracts like that just to maintain the webpage, that seems excessive to me. Um it seems like it could be all wrapped into one service and the city should be saving some money. And I believe that um the other one that I was told about was not put out to bid. It was someone that Rex hired. Um and I don't recall seeing a bid for this service either. So you're you're hiring contractors without bids. I'm spending a lot of money and it seems to me there might be a better way. So if if I could get an answer to the question about if there's also being paid a webmaster, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, um thank you, Ms. Marino. And Ms. Roberts, uh is this something you'd like to follow up on as far as Ms. Marino's questions? Would you like to follow up at a a later time or or do you feel prepared to?
I can have about.
I can have. We do have a separate person that maintains our website. Um it is a flat sixteen hundred dollars a month for that. This contract is just for our servers and our computers. He does everything but the website.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom. Is there anybody else on Zoom who would like to make public comment? And you can ease, either use the raised hand feature. I want to make sure I'm not missing anybody. Okay, I don't, I don't see any other hands up. So I'm gonna close this to public comment and ask the council one more time. Are there any additional comments or questions? Um Councilmember White?
I'm still good.
Okay, Councilmember McLaughlin?
Got nothing.
Uh Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
I had my questions answered and thank you for pulling the item for me.
Of course. Vice Mayor Sim?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm also good. So at this time, I would entertain a motion if the council desires.
I'll I'll make a motion to um approve the item as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Could we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Um I think this is timely. Item seven point three on the agenda, review list of open contracts between the city and third parties. Could we please get a staff report?
Upon my arrival to the city, I was asked about contracts that the city had opened. And so I finally had time to make a list of the contracts that I could physically get my hands on that were still current. And so this is the list that I could physically get my hands on to get the data that is in the spreadsheet. There, I know we are still paying on expired contracts. I'm working on getting a list of those expired contracts because I know we need to go out to bid on several items. I have not had time to do RFPs for all of those things. Um with the limited staff that we have, I'm trying to pilfer from other cities those RFPs to do that. Um but this is the list of contracts that I could physically get my hands on. I did um put a second sheet on with the leases that I could get my hands on. I know we probably have more leases than that. I do have some in the safe that I have not added to the spreadsheet. We are starting to scan into our computer all of the deeds that we have, so we'll be able to access those as well. We're trying to get our records in order, uh which is a good thing. I want to be able to put a lot of these things online so that the public also has access, which will cut down on our records requests. But this is the list of contracts that I could get my hands on and I am hopefully can answer any of the questions that the council has on these.
Thank you. So I had to open this up for council discussion. Councilmember White?
I'm good at this moment right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yeah, I too am as well. Thank you for putting this together. I know it's been a lot of work, but much needed. Thank you.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Um, thank you. I, well, I appreciate the information. I have asked for contract transparency for a very long time. This is more of a data dump. Because we don't have any sorting between public safety, franchise agreements. What is current, we've included in this list, we've got construction con- contracts that are not a current contract because the project's done. So I'd like to keep working on this and have it come down to a a a reasonable amount, things that don't need to be on this list excluded and important things included. So um I'd like to see it come back with some organization.
Thank you. Councilmember, uh Vice Mayor Sim?
Uh I want to thank the city manager for doing this. I've been on council now for several years. It's the first time I've ever seen it even look. several years, it's the first time I've ever seen anything even looks like this, uh, we can pick at it all we want. And uh, the fact is, it's uh, obviously, it's, 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 it's a uh, a work in progress. And uh, I, I can, I, I really appreciate her, her efforts of putting this together. It was, it's very enlightening to see all these various contracts that uh, that the city is uh has on file, anyway, I wanna, thanks again.
Thank you, and my comments would be that um, I agree, thank you, Ms. Robertson and the rest of your staff for um, going through the files and everything that you had to do to get your hands on, on these contracts. And um, I think that uh, this is a work in progress. But uh, I agree with Vice Mayor Sim, in the two and a half years I've been on the council, this is the first time I've seen something like this. And I know when we look at the, the monthly warrants, um, I'm wondering what, what are what are we paying for, for some of these services? And I think some of them we can match up and some of them we, we, we can't match up. Because like Councilmember uh Kleinfeldter said, these are projects that are done o- over and done with. And um, but I, I think this is a good start, so again, I thank you for this. And um, I, at this point, I'd like to open this up for public comment. And is there anybody at City Hall who would like to make public comment on this item?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna ask um, if there's, we have, uh, we haven't received any correspondence on this, any written correspondence on this agenda item. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to make public comment on this, on item seven point three? The review of the current contracts? Or contracts, I don't see any hands up. Dana, am I missing anybody?
I don't see any hands up either.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll close this to public comment and I'll just go uh double check with the council one more time, um, Councilmember White?
Um, I'm still good, no comment.
Okay, uh, look, uh, Councilmember McLaughlin stepped away?
Yes, he did.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Um, I, well, I don't see that we're gonna have any action on this item besides um instructions to staff. And it, keep working on it, uh, and that's, this is a start. Um, but I have a few questions on what different contracts are, but I'm gonna submit those to Margaret for answers and try to work with her too on, you know, cleaning this up, are we done with that, are we done with that kind of thing? So it's a work, you, you're correct, it's a work in progress.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Sim?
Uh, no, again, but it's just, but like to say one more time, it's, it's been a long time coming. And uh, thank goodness we have some, we have a starting point, right? I, I like it and I, I applaud Margaret for all her hard work, thank you.
Thank you, so uh, Councilmember McLaughlin, I was just going through one more time to see if any council members had any, any additional comments on this.
Yep, just recognizing this is a, a living document, now that we have it, it can live, so pump some life into it, thank you for making it happen.
Okay, thank you, and my final comment is just uh to Councilmember Kleinfeldter and Councilmember White. You guys have both been around for a while and your historical knowledge might be really helpful with a lot of these that uh, us newer members aren't familiar with, so thank you for offering to help. And uh, is it fair me, for, fair for me to say that the consensus of the council is to ask city staff to continue to work on this?
Yes.
I see a couple of thumbs up, okay, great, thank you, and moving on to what is now item seven point four, consider adoption of community development block grant or CDBG complaint slash grievance policy and procedure. Could we please get a staff report?
So before you is a draft procedure for um, the community development block grant complaint procedure. And it is a requirement by CDBG grants for most CDBG grants. Um, I took this directly off the CDBG website and just put in our city information, it um, was their policy that they have on their website for cities to use, and I plugged in our information. Um. It is for citizens to file a complaint with the city if they feel that there's been discrimination, public participation or public input. Um, contract procurement disputes, other program requirements such as acquisition, relocation, action or labor standard violations, or decisions about eligibility and providing assistance problems through the grant process. So they would file the, the initial complaint with the city manager. And the city manager would review the information and get back to the complaining party with a decision. If they don't agree with that decision, then they could file an appeal with the mayor. If they do not agree with the mayor's decision, they could file an appeal with HCD who would make the final determining decision. And all of the records would remain on file in the CDBG files um, with the grant for as long as you have to keep the grant file.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to open it to council discussion, Councilmember White?
Oh, I'll wait until after public comment.
Okay. Councilmember McLaughlin?
I'll wait as well.
Uh, Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Well, I think this is long overdue, it's a requirement for CDBG, HCD that we have this process, but we can't just have the process. We have to make sure people know it's available to them. So uh, that's gonna be part of our job moving forward. So um, I'm glad to see it on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Sim?
I have no comment.
Okay, and my comment um only at this, at this time is on, uh, just a, I noticed what I think is a typo. Um, on the first page, under procedures, the second paragraph, where it says a complaint should be filed in writing or verbally if the complainant is unable to prepare, prepare the complaint. Um, that's the only thing I would have on that, and then on page two, under four, where it has A, B, C, D, E, um, and, and maybe I missed this somewhere else, but um uh, would it be, it says the complaints officer shall maintain the files and records of the city of Plymouth relating to any complaints filed, the complaint file should include, and it seems like it should include a copy of the complaint, unless that's kept somewhere else. Or I just missed it, those are my only two comments on that. Um, so I'd like to open this to public comment, is there anybody in City Hall who would like to make public comment on this agenda item?
Michael Spinetta hugs you. Um, I completely agree with the councilman, uh, make the complaint procedure known to people that is available to them. Um, it's a good standard. And possibly along with making it known to them, give them a little bit of history about maybe some other things so they really fully understand the process that got to this point. Now, uh, I, I, I guess I request the staff maybe develop something uh for the public looking at how uh, the COVID CB, I say that wrong, so I, I tried, I messed it up with the place in New York. CDBG funds are being affected in the, in other rural cities of our county. Um, uh, you know, maybe add that in there too. Uh, so it might answer some questions like an F, a FAQ um, to show, you know, if, are we unique in what's happening with our CDBG funds? Or, you know, I own or Little Town Valderado, something like that, something that shows a fact that shows how these other, how these funds are being affected in other cities, maybe other cities have the same problems as ours or something, who knows? Um, and then concurrently, and this, this up to you, but maybe possibly a packet briefly showing the history of actions that led to this point by council, you know, regarding the funds and, you know, sharing it openly with the public so while a complaint method is being established, um, or after or whatever, but something that just a couple of supplements that show, hey, this is what is happening elsewhere and this is what led to it here. Um, I don't know, just something like that, just a couple of other ideas that might work, but an FAQ would be, make it easy for a lot of people.
Thank you, Mr. Spinetta, is there anybody else in City Hall who'd like to make public comment on this agenda item?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you, and um, I also want to acknowledge that we've received written public comment via email jointly submitted by Ms. Gomes and Ms. Moreno regarding uh uh, which is now item seven point four. Um, the email that was received by Ms. Gomes and Ms. Moreno, the email included an attachment which is a copy of their com- the complaint they have filed, they have submitted to the city alleging the city's failure to follow CDBG regulations. And this pub, their public comment will be made part of the record. And I'm not aware that we've received any other correspondence on this. So I'm now gonna open up, open this up to, to Zoom. And uh, Ms. Moreno, I see you have your hand raised, and again, as with the earlier item, um, we have received and then noted your written public comment. Um, as before, um, if you would, if you have additional public comment to make, um uh, I'll allow that and um ask that your additional public comment uh, not be duplicative to what you've already submitted to the council. So go ahead, Ms. Moreno.
Um, uh, once again, I want to put into the record that I feel it discriminatory that um I am being um singled out as is Ms. Gomes from preventing to speak on items that we submitted in writing when numerous members of the public, including some in the audience and on Zoom, have done so in the past, and never has, uh, have they been prevented from doing so. Um, uh, but my comment tonight uh was that I wanted to compliment city manager Roberts and the city council for considering moving forward and adopting a complaint procedure to bring them that much closer into compliance with CDBG regulations. And I want, want to thank Ms. Roberts for her prompt response upon receiving the complaint that we submitted and letting me know that it would be handled promptly and according to the policy tonight if adopted. So I just wanted to put that into the record, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gomes, you have your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to say, um, I also say the same thing, the same type of sentiment, I was happy, kind of surprised to see it on the agenda and appreciative, and I also, um, I, I wanted to suggest coming up with a public participation plan. I know the state does that and it's not required really at a local level to come up with as stringent of requirements, but um, it's, it's easily found and it could be duplicative and um, and I just, that's my, my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, and you called that a public participation plan, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, are there any other uh folks on Zoom who would like to make public comment on this item?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, neither do I, so I'm gonna go ahead and close this to public comment and uh go back to the co- the council for, oh, yes.
I just wanted to make a comment on um, Ms. Gomes' comment. I, I am in the process of writing a public participation plan.
I, I see she just put a, a heart emoji, so thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close this to public comment, I see no other hands raised, I'll bring this back to the council. And um, again, Councilmember White, any comments, questions or anything on this agenda item?
This is more just a question and it might be more for legal, um, cause I don't know if there needs to be a separate description with um with our social media, um, can they direct message the city? And do we need to have something for, on social media, because with the in writing, that's the only reason I'm questioning that, or is that even relevant to this?
Yeah, I think in writing would include an electronic format, whether it be a direct message by social media or an email.
So i- in the statement in this uh, would we want to say including social media or?
I, I would defer to the council on that, I think it's implied, writing would include an electronic submission, but it's, if, if the council would prefer, we can make that, that's a very minor edit.
Trying to make sure the legalese part is covered.
I think, in here, notes the complaint should be addressed to the city manager, either the physical address, phone number listed, and then email. And I think, you know, maybe keeping it there, then we don't have to run the risk of something getting lost in social media.
That, that's why I was kinda, I guess, going with that too. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember White, um, Councilmember McLaughlin, I, I just heard your comments, but do you have additional thoughts or comments, questions on this?
No.
Okay, thank you, um, Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Yes, um, since the language um, of this comes directly from CDBG, I would be reluctant to muck around with it and cha- add words or change directions. All of the other points that have been made about public participation or inclusiveness, that it is a separate item, but this is strictly about the complaint procedure.
Okay, anything else, uh, Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Sim?
It's obvious that we're trying to follow the rules and it's a good thing, uh, there's a lot of money at stake. Uh, I, I, I am not a CDBG expert, uh, there's a lot of information here, but uh, no, no doubt that uh, complaint procedures are very important, um, I'm glad it's on the agenda, and uh, I think that um uh, is, it perhaps was a lot of things that perhaps weren't done a number of years ago that uh put some of our, uh, some of our block grants in jeopardy. Uh, I mean, obviously, we're, we're facing a few of them right now, anyway, uh, thank you, Margaret, for doing this, to obviously, it's, it's part of the procedure, but it's, it's a good thing, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sim, and, and my comments would be, um, uh, uh, again, I agree with uh Councilmember Kleinfeldter that being this came, uh, has come directly from HCD, I think this is a, a great template to follow, and um, other issues that were brought up, I think, uh, I think they're important issues um, that can be uh, separate documents, but that we leave this one alone. So those are my comments on that, so at this point, um, I'd like to uh entertain a motion if the council desires.
I make a motion for the adoption of the community development block grant complaints and grievance policies and procedures.
Mayor, I apologize, uh, Councilmember White, just to clarify, that would include the typographical corrections that were noted?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
And I have a second.
Okay, thank you, it's been moved and seconded, can we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, uh, please give me a minute, I misplaced my copy of the agenda, here we go. Okay, that was our uh last agenda item, so moving Okay, that was our, uh, last agenda item. So moving on to number eight, uh, council staff communications, um, eight point one, the city manager's report. Ms. Roberts, can we please have a city manager's report?
Yes, I have a few items. So I have been working with Councilmember White and staff on creating a sounds of September, which will include food and music at McGee Park on Friday evenings for all five Fridays in September. And we have reached out to all of the mobile food vendors with current business license, licenses to see if they wanna participate. That way we'll get a variety of vendors instead of just the same vendors all the time. And we've already had new vendors um, responding back that they're interested. So I think that's a great thing. Uh, we're trying to draw the community out to interact with each other, um, talk with each other and meet new people. Um, I heard yesterday that someone thought that the fairgrounds was paying for the water at the city pool and I just wanted to clarify that there's a meter in place that meters the water that goes to the pool and that's deducted from the water bill that the fairgrounds gets. And, um, we had our first meeting with the fair and law enforcement and medical personnel that will be working at the fair today and, um, we will be issuing parking permits for motor vehicles only that are registered to the homes for residents on Locust Street and Empire from Locust Street to the highway so that emergency vehicles can get through there. Um, it's gonna be a little bit different this year. Um, it's, the number is gonna be, um, limited to the vehicles that are actually registered to those residents, so they can't come, just come in and say, I want ten parking permits. The vehicles need to be registered to those houses. Um, it doesn't do us any good to give ten parking permits to one house when the idea is to limit the parking on those streets so that the fire apparatus can get out in an emergency. And then this weekend, due to the hot weather, um, City Hall will be staffing, um, will be open from one to seven for a cooling center. I'll be here, um, staffing that cooling center. And we'll have water and snacks and we'll be open from one to seven Saturday and Sunday. And then I just wanted to say that I spoke at Rotary on Monday and talked about the things that the city is working on um, that we have going on. And I just wanted to talk about the park grants for a moment. Um, I'm gonna be scheduling a public participation meeting because I wanna get the public input. I wanna do this grant right. I don't want to get to where we were with the CB grants. I wanna get public input on what they wanna see in McGee Park and at Lodge Hill before we move forward with that grant and the projects that are gonna take place. So in the next week or so, we'll get out on social media. I'll put an ad in the paper, put the postings at the post office, our bulletin board, and I'll see if Pokerville will allow us to put something up at the store to announce the meeting. I'll it'll probably be a couple, three weeks out so that there's enough to get the word out. So hopefully there'll be a good turnout for the public input on those grants. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Um, the mayor and council member reports. Councilmember White?
Um, yeah, so Margaret and I've been working on this. Um, hopefully we'll get some pretty cool bands to come in. Um, been talking to quite a few bands as of late and, um, yeah, that's basically it. Um, it's hot. That's all I gotta say right now.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Councilmember McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just, uh, um, agenda item, just to follow up, you know, I'd asked, um, for a report this meeting on the, the status of our water research and the ability to sell the water. And I know Frank is um, out of town on his anniversary, so it's permissible, but if possible, if we could get a report at the, um, next, um, scheduled meeting, just to, and have almost like a like a once a month update, so we can continue to stay on top of that. Um, the other item, well, I don't know if it's an item, report maybe leading into an item. Um, last council meeting, um, during public comment, um, while one, one of, uh, our members of the community was speaking, one of us from the dais spoke up, made inappropriate comments. Um, then again tonight, while during public comment, there was additional inappropriate comments from the dais directed to members in this community for me, which is just completely unacceptable. Our job appears to lead by example, to be the leaders of the community, to lead, to, to show how things are be done in decorum. Um, I'd like to dovetail into a previous request, um, by our mayor to have an ethics policy created and I guess I'd like to, I guess, one up that one and, um, ask for um, a comprehensive set of, um, city council, basically elected and appointed officials policies to talk about meetings and how we would conduct meetings, interactions with public and staff, um, records retention, um, public comment, conduct from the dais as well as without, because we represent the community, we have an obligation to bring respect upon the city. Um, I'd like to see this come back at the August tenth meeting. It's three, four, that's actually, was it like four weeks, three weeks? Cause I know the next council meeting um, is, um, is canceled. I know there's many great opportunities out there. Every city has a comprehensive set of these types of policies and I'm happy to help in any way. Um, is there any opposition from the council on, on doing? You know, pushing forward to that? That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember McLaughlin. Um, Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Yes, um, I wanted to mention to Margaret uh, about the planning process for the park grants, if she could make sure that my proposals for both the McGee Park and Lodge Hill Park that I prepared about a year ago are available to, you know, be a part of that meeting. Um, people like, might like some of it, not all of it, but it's a good place to start. Um, I'll have be at Lincoln next Friday for the League of California's regional meeting. Um, it's, we get to tour the Gladig McBean factory, which was, you know, I've been a Franciscan freak all my life, so that's kind of a a neat thing for Lincoln to have right in the middle of their city. So, um, I, if I have agenda items, I will get them to Margaret.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sim? Any, uh, any reports on your behalf or requests for future agenda items?
No, just, uh, just a comment that, uh, we've been talking about how, how hot it's been and how hot it's gonna be. And there's been a few, uh, remarks about the lack of the sunshades down around the pool and so forth, but, uh, uh, we had sunshades at McGee Park and, uh, they were, uh, they were put up here recently and, uh, I hate, I hate to blame it on the kids, right? I'm not, I'm not, nobody saw who did it, but apparently somebody used them as, as trambulines, destroy the shades and they're down and they're gone and, and, uh, now it, they're about a thousand dollars piece. And so the city is, has elected not to replace them just to have them be, uh, tore down again. So it's too bad because it, it's, it's very hot over there. Uh, we're gonna have these functions on Friday afternoon and so forth. It'd be nice to have some sunshades. I'm not sure uh, how, how we rectify this issue, but, uh, uh, but it's, it's kinda sad that, that nobody saw these, these folks do this and, uh, I mean, we can take another look at how, how we solve this problem going forward, cause it's gonna be awful hot next couple of months.
They also bent the poles, so we have to remove, we have to remove two of the poles.
Yeah, I know. Uh, obviously they, they missed one shade cause one's still up, but, uh, and, uh, and the ones at Papa Park are, are, are fine. It's just, uh, the, the two or three that were I can't believe nobody saw this going on, but, uh, apparently nobody reported. Anyway, I, I hate to be reported, uh, uh, down there, but it is hot and it should be nice to have some shade down there, but, uh, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sim. Um, I have, um, I have, I have nothing specific to report, but, um, just to, um, my thought, and I, I know we can't have a discussion on this now, but I'm wondering about, um, the, the sunshades. Um, yeah, obviously we need to think of something that is, uh, a little more vandal proof. I don't know what that is, but I'm wondering if, and this for a later discussion and maybe uh, Councilmember Kleinfeldter and I can talk about that, but if TOT money could be used, um, uh, just to think about, um, uh, getting some, some type of structures out there. Um, and then also just, um, I support what, um, Councilmember McLaughlin brought up about a future agenda, future agenda item, hopefully on the, the August tenth meeting, um, so that we can have a discussion about some policies and procedures and that sort of thing. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, you're all suffering from the heat. Nice and mild here in Colorado. Um, and otherwise I have nothing else to report. And so if that's it for everybody, everybody, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at this time at nine twenty-nine. Thank you, everybody, and good night.
Thank you.